Are you guys ready in the conference room?
Okay, Chairman, let me know when you want me to press record.
Okay, we're ready to record. Okay, thank you. Just let me know if you guys want me to share my screen. I have the agenda in front of me, but I'll be clicking back and forth. I'll get started. Hafaday, this is the Guam EPA Board of Directors' regular meeting. Today's date is Thursday, June 19, 2025. The approximate time is 4 o'clock PM, and this meeting is being recorded. Let's do the roll call. So for Heather, we're just gonna state our name and where we're calling in from. So I'll go first, and then I'll call off the directors, and then you can just say if you're present. Stephen Carbelito calling in from Agania Heights. Director Carrera.
President calling in from Agania.
Director Hollister.
Hi, President calling from Haggett.
Director Kathleen.
Hafaday, I'm calling in from Epan.
Thank you, and Director Heather.
Hafaday calling in online from Agania.
Thank you, seeing that the publication went out, and we have a quorum. Let's get this meeting started. I just wanna start off by saying, welcome Heather to our Board of Directors' first meeting. Thank you, and glad to have you on board.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
And Director Lastimosa, or Administrator Lastimosa is unable to make it. So stepping in for her today is Captain DeGrange. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So we have a lot on the agenda that we probably won't get to everything today, but we'll tackle our board action items, as well as the administrators' report, and we'll just go through Q and A and status reports that we can, but likely we won't do the sampling results presentation. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a second. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Next item approval of last meeting's meeting minutes. Let me know if there's a motion.
I move to approve the March meeting minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I.
I.
Thank you.
I abstain.
Yes, thank you, Director Heather. I think we have enough votes to pass on the motion, so motion passes. Thank you. Next item, board discussion and action for an election for board chairperson. So right now, the position is vacant, and per Kristen, we should take this time to elect a chairperson, and open up the floor for anybody to make nominations.
I nominate Stephen Carbelito for chair. I second.
I second.
Thank you so much. Any other, or I guess, is there any discussion on the nomination? I'll just say thank you to all the directors, and I'm more than happy to keep the status quo and continue as chairman. Now call for the vote. All in favor?
I.
I.
Director Carrera, are you there? Okay, you're there. Okay, you're good. Okay, so Director Carrera, you vote I?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I. Motion passes. Thank you very much, everybody. Next item, reimbursement to GSWA from RF FY25 Q1 and Q2 activities. Is there a representative from GSWA on? I don't think so. Okay, I'll go through this. So the law says that we're to review their proposal, not really their spending. So in your board packet, number 3A is the cost proposal, so I could share my screen. Do you see 3A?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll just go through it quickly. It is for bulky and metallic waste collection at a cost of $250,000. This includes refrigerators, hot water heaters, washing machines, furniture, mattress, and couches, and large appliances. The next one is for household hazardous waste for $400,000. For $150,000. And that is for hazardous waste and TV and e-waste collection, and that is for a total of $400,000. Okay, and then also in your board packet is the amount that they've spent, and that is an FYI. Initially, they thought that they had to provide that for reimbursement, but the law says the cost proposal. So it's an upfront request to the board of what will be spent on. I'll open up for the floor and any motions to review and approve their cost proposal. And once we do this, then Guam EPA's administrator could reimburse them for costs incurred for this fiscal year.
So in the end, after all this, they'll submit their bills and things. I mean, we're giving them the $400,000, then later they'll submit what they.
So it's in the board packet already. It's number three, request for reimbursement. And so they've, for Q1 and Q2, they've spent $227,000. So Michelle will be able to release $227,000 from the RF once we approve their cost proposal, and their spending is in line with the approved cost proposal. Connie, feel free to step in to supplement.
It's just, it looks like all of their receipts are actually already attached, so.
Yes.
Right? Okay, so we know those so far.
So we do have Glenn, the acting deputy administrator also, who reviews those expenditures, and just makes sure that they're in line with the RF rules as far as what is allowable as far as reimbursement, and we're not duplicating it. So we do go through it as well.
So I'd make a motion to proceed with dispersment.
I'll ask if you wanna make a motion to approve the cost proposal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I. Thank you. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Captain DeGrange for the administrators' report.
Thanks, all. Obviously, I'm standing in for Administrator Lastimosa. Our deputy administrator is currently out sick, so I'm also standing in for him, even though my regulations won't allow a beard, so I gotta get rid of that. Forgiving the redundancy, there will be some, because I have the April and May administrators' reports. So if you'll forgive me that, then I'll read through both reports at once. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so our administrators' report for April 17th, those are our agency updates from the 13th of March through the 17th of April. Administrative, we, as of the 19th of March, and actually present, we have 55 full-time equivalents onboard. I'll spare you the breakdown of each division, but you guys can read that in your report. Our recruitment is as follows. In the administration division, we have conducted interviews for public information officers. In the water division, we have the positions of chief engineer, which the certified packet has been received. It's pending review at DOA. And Connie, if I say that incorrectly, please fix what I break. We have two environmental technician positions that we're going to, we're gonna re-announce for the second vacancy. We did hire one, and she started Monday, started Monday, the 12th, no, 12th. We have also an engineer supervisor, which is pending announcement, and an engineer one. We have three engineer one positions that are also pending an announcement. In the safe drinking water division, we have an environmental health specialist three. The certification packet was received, pending interviews, which you'll find out in the next report, have been conducted, and that environmental health specialist three has been selected. For air and land, we had an environmental health specialist three, and two environmental health specialist twos. The EHS three, the certification packets were received. Those interviews were also conducted. You'll hear about that in the next report. And then the environmental health specialist two, two of those are pending announcement. In EMAS, we have environmental health specialists, four of them, with interviews conducted. For the agency headquarters, negotiations have been completed. The contract for A&E services was signed on April 3rd, 2025, and it's currently at the AG's office pending their review. The policy, the plastic bag ban, which is public law 36/98, says effective July 1st, 2025, paper carryout bag will be phased out. Senator Luhon has introduced Bill 121-38, which proposes to amend the choose-to-reuse Act of 2018 to exempt branded paper bags from the ban on single-use plastic bags that aims to allow retailers to use branded plastic, or branded paper bags while still adhering to the overall goal of reducing plastic waste. Bill number 83-38 corrected with Vice Chair Anthony Ada an act to add new section 1203.1 to Article 2 of Chapter 1, Title V, Guam Code annotated, and a new section 45112 to Article 1 of Chapter 45, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing the Bureau of Statistics and Plans Guam Coastal Management Program and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to employ environmental law attorneys for their exclusive use. We provided testimony in support of this bill with the following comment. With regard to the current language of Section 45112, environmental law attorney for the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, which reads, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency is authorized to use its federal funds to hire an attorney for its exclusive use. The attorney shall be hired as a classified employee pursuant to the provisions of Section 4103G and Section 4103H of Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code annotated, or to procure these services of an attorney pursuant to and in accordance with the Guam procurement process for professional services. We recommend the following language to the new Section 45112. The attorney shall be hired as a classified employee pursuant to the government of Guam's Department of Administration's personnel rules and regulations, or the attorney shall be hired using the classified positions pursuant to the provisions of Section 4103G and Section 4103H of Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code annotated, or hired through the limited term appointment, or temporary appointment, or to procure the services of an attorney pursuant to and in accordance with the Guam procurement process for professional services." Bill number 28-38, corrected, Sabina Flores Perez, and act to amend Section 28112C of Chapter 28, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's compliance and enforcement capacity to protect the health of our environment and people. The agency provided testimony and supported this bill with the following comments. In Section 45200A, "To expand the use of the fund beyond to clean up hazardous materials and restore and repair damage done to Guam's environment, as well as to collect, transport, and process and dispose of household waste in accordance with the provisions of the order dump consent decree supplemental environmental project, SCP. We recommend the use of the fund be used for activities to include water quality improvement, waste management, air quality, hazardous waste recycling, environmental monitoring and analysis, environmental planning, and emergency response, technical assistance and training, and compliance and enforcement." In Section 45201, "Remove the cap of 25% of the funds in the ETF that may be utilized by administrators of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency for programs relative to the prevention of environmental problems and the promotion of keeping a safe and healthy environment. We recommend the funds be used to support a range of environmental efforts as recommended for Section 45200A above." In Section 45202, "Authorized expenditure and emergency declaration. Remove the cap of $5,000. The administrator is authorized to spend for the purposes of assessment, cleaning up hazardous materials, and restoring and repairing damages done to the Guam environment per emergency declaration without legislative appropriation, provided that an emergency declaration has been declared by the governor. We also recommend that the authorized expenditure include any emergency response activity that could occur without necessarily an emergency declaration by the governor, and to include provisions for staff pay, equipment, and supplies to support the emergency response activity." With programs, projects, and partnerships regarding the RRF audit, OPA auditing, the Recycling Revolving Fund is ongoing. For APRA Harbor Waterfront Repairs, our acting deputy administrator attended stakeholder meeting on March 19th and 20th, 2025, to establish effective communication, identify potential issues within the project, develop action plans, clear good working, create a good working relationship among all project stakeholders to develop mutual goals, and jointly create problem-solving procedure to eliminate unnecessary delays, costs, and inconveniences. The Gura Technical Assistance Workshop for Community Development and Block Grant Disaster Relief, a total of $500,825,000, was appropriated by the US Congress to support recovery efforts from Typhoon Maure. These funds will be administered by the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. Guam EPA was invited to offer a project proposal for consideration. The University of Guam Center for Island Sustainability, 2025, conference took place April 7th through 12th, 2025. Administrator Lastimosa, Gabriela Prias, Kerlausti, Louise Pasqua, Julia Pujihara, and Miguel Cordero also attended, along with some other members of the Guam EPA. Guam Sustainable Culture Compost Workshop was conducted there, which aims to promote sustainable agriculture and environmental stewardship on Guam. It's focused on residential composting, and this project, in partnership with the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, is supported with funding from the Solid Waste Infrastructure for Recycling, or SWIFR, grant program to encourage food waste and yard waste diversion. The Working Group for the Construction of the New Hospital, it's a bi-weekly meeting. We continue to provide technical support and answer questions as requested. Our Zero Waste Working Group, Acting Deputy Administrator San Nicholas, and the Recycling Coordinator attended a virtual meeting on March 25th. They provided an update of our activities, which include Illegal Dumping and Literate Control Act, the Guam EPA amended Chapter 51, Article 2 of the Guam Literate Control Act to enhance enforcement with new fee schedules and waste volume parameters. The mandatory residential island-wide collection, Guam EPA supported the Second Amendment to Bill 30-38, which places more responsibility on the Guam Solid Waste Authority. Previous attempts to pass this legislation have failed due to unresolved lifeline funding issues for low and no-income families. Good waste and organics composting, permitted composting facilities exist on the island. DoD properties keep all green waste within federal land and process it on-site. Environmentally-preferred purchasing, a law exists under the purview of the Department of Administration, Guam Services Agency, GSA. Guam EPA is designated as the enforcement agency to ensure greener product purchasing. The landfill waste division, Guam EPA policy exists to divert construction and demolition debris and green waste from clearing and grading activities from the landfill with Guam Sustainable Culture Partnership, USCPA, Solid Waste Infrastructure Recycling, or SWIFR, grant-funded initiative awarded to Guam EPA in partnership with Guam Sustainable Culture. There are two-year grant funds, home composting and gardening training in all villages with two rounds of participants and 200 households each year. Senator Sabina Perez is working on a bill to expand the definition of composting to include onsite management by farmers and businesses. We also reappointed Mr. Stephen P. Carbelito as a member of the Board of Directors. We provided testimony and support. Obviously, that's happened. We're glad to hear, sir. The Mariana Island Conservation Strategy or MIX, we continued engagement with Stephanie Hertz with the Department of Defense. She serves as the Recovery and Sustainability Partnership Coordinator, or RASP, coordinator for the Department of Defense, DoD. Their Natural Resources Program within the Office of the Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense, Environmental Management and Restoration, under Ron Tipple. The RASP is a partnership between DoD and the Department of Interior, focused on developing and promoting conservation and recovery initiatives for threatened and endangered and at-risk species while promoting increased flexibility for military mission activities. We discuss proactive, innovative, and collaborative approaches that enhance implementation of the Endangered Species Act, or ESA, that also sustain and enhance the military mission and achieve greater conservation outcomes for the species. Obviously, this has already happened, but April 29th and May 2nd, Administrator Lastimosa and I traveled to Honolulu to participate in that meeting. We had a meeting with JRM to discuss the MOA regarding design review and design self-certification, and also overcome by events, or OBE, the appointment of Director Heather as a member of our Board of Directors. We clearly support that. Man, we're glad you're here. Our inspection activity, it's hard to read something two months in the past when. Our inspection activity for the weeks of March 31st to April 11th, we had a total of 198 inspections that were conducted. And I'll allow you to read, the vast majority of those were air and land between dismoa, hazardous pesticides, and solid waste. And then, of course, we had water inspections and safe drinking water sanitary inspections that occurred. Our permit activity from 15 March to 11 April. You can see there was a total of 111 applications, total of 116 issuances, one permit on hold. And keep in mind that some of those issuances were for applications that happened prior to that period of time. Moving on to May 29th.
As you do the May one, you did a great job. You don't need to read all the subbullets for the laws.
I'm trying to not mess it up.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you the brief brief then. Okay, so our agency updates from the 12th of April through the 23rd of May, 2025. Again, still 55 full-time employees. Our recruitment is largely the same. However, we have some updates. The Public Information Officer, we conducted interviews, we made a selection. We did not have response from that applicant after some back and forth with with Department of Administration. We reached out to the second candidate that was on the list that was provided to us. That candidate has already taken employee, or employment with another agency, and we've reached back out to DOA because we had a couple of questions about the list that we received from them. Connie, do you wanna chime in anything on that?
Sure. So we did receive something from DOA today, and we are in the process, again, of, not going back to square one, but we are in the process of contacting the remaining applicant or the next applicant in line again to see their interests.
Thank you. I'm just making notes, so I know where to tell my boss I messed up. Our other chief engineer, again, we conducted that interview. We're awaiting DOA's request for an above-step recruitment and working on that process. Connie, do you have anything?
Yes, so we did get the information back from DOA, which is a notice of intent. And we are advertising that as well, putting that on our website. Notice of intent, of course, is like for above pay increase or above pay status. So that will be up on our website for 10 days, and we will wait and see if there's any comments from any of the public before we can move forward with it. Per DOA's regulations again.
Thank you very much. Again, the other recruitment that we have in place primarily in the water division, we have two environmental technicians. We selected one, and then we're gonna re-announce for the second vacancy. We have the engineer supervisor and three engineer ones, again, still pending announcement. And the safe drinking water environmental health specialist three. We conducted those interviews. We selected Ms. Julia Mendoza for that position. We're glad to have her there. For air and land, we made selection for the environmental health specialist three, and I believe that was Darian Mitchell. No, it says, yeah, Darian. And we're pending announcement for two EHS twos for the air and land division. In EMAS, for our environmental health specialist one, four of those positions are there. Interviews were conducted and selections were made, and I'll probably screw up that whole list of names because I get you all confused. Don't think that hurt, buddy. Same update for the agency headquarters, the site up in Dedito. We're awaiting feedback from the AG's office before we proceed and actually starting that work. We're hoping to get that feedback quickly, so that, that's a six-month contract. We hope to have it completed by the end of the year. So for policy, I think this one is also OBE, right, for Bill 2038. You don't need all those subbullets, but again, that would amend Section 28112C, Chapter 28, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's compliance and enforcement capacity to protect the health of our environment and people. I'll spare you the subbullets. Thank you, sir. And then we can hear, so the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, PD Cabris, sulfur dioxide, or SO2 state implementation plan, emission inventory, technical support document has been completed. The public hearing was held, so that's an update to this. And all of that information has been submitted to USCPA for their review and approval. We're hoping to hear back within a month or two to see how that's going. So that was a big step, big, big progress there. With the programs, partnerships, and projects, obviously, we had the Earth Day 2025 proclamation signing. Then we conducted a site maintenance event in Ascot Al and Moleso. The RF audit is still ongoing regarding the Recycling Revolving Fund. The Gura Technical Assistance Workshop for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Relief. Again, same here as in my last update. There's over $500 million that was appropriated. We're invited to offer project proposals, and we are working on development of that project proposal. We continue to serve on the Working Group for Construction of the New Hospital in providing technical support. Again, with the Mariana Island Conservation Strategy, we've continued our engagement with Stephanie Hertz, the RASP, and DoD, along with other partners from CNMI and Guam. That was actually a very successful meeting. We had three members from CNMI, three members. That was actually a very successful meeting. We had three members from CNMI, three members from Guam plus me. And spent two and a half really jam packed days discussing, you know, some of fish and wildlife's concern, DoD's concern, how, ways that we could work together. Priority species that we want to focus on, you know, getting some survey data. And then how can we move forward in, in proceeding with some of the DoD buildup projects? While not further putting those species at risk. We had a meeting, oh, sorry, the annual NAS TTPO conference was April 21st through 25th. Green Porcelles staff presented successful interactions with other agencies during disasters. And worked about like Guam typhoons created the, how Guam typhoons created a need for multi-agency coordination. I believe that was Ms. Tassi Castro and Ms. GA. Takasi, sorry, forgive me. We also held a meeting with GCA to discuss a possible MOA regarding CGGS or clearing grading permits. We also met the Smith Bridge to discuss the Polaris Point project and encapsulating onsite debris. Debris and concrete to create platforms. We were not in favor of the encapsulation. There were a lot of other things. That kind of led us to that direction. That was in consultation also with, I think, ancestral lands. We also had a meeting with the USCPA onsite coordinators or OSC. As they're now back working on the cleanup of the Dedito site. Our inspection activity for 12 April through 23 May, I'll let you guys read numbers there. The total inspections were 247. Again, large portion of those were the sanitary inspections with safe drinking water. And lead free inspections also with safe drinking water. So our water inspectors have nearly half of those inspections. And then permit activity for 12 April through 23 May, you can see we received 420 applications. We issued 124 permits and we have nine permits on hold. And that's all I have pending your questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Captain DeGrange. Go ahead, Director Kathleen.
Yeah, hi. I have two questions and one is with the negotiations complete for the contract for the A and E services. But we still, the board still doesn't get to know who this is or anything else about it. It's been, you know, very tightly held information.
So this is a question that I would defer to Ms. Finney, but she's not here.
I got it.
Okay, good.
So again, it's not that we didn't want to tell the board. Whenever there's a negotiation process, obviously, we can't do anything until a contract is in place. So we finally got the contract in place. It's still with the AG's office. We can tell you, I believe it's Kuna Moto. That we signed the contract with. He is our contractor who we, that was been selected for the A and E. So it's not that we were trying to hide it from you guys, obviously, it's the regulations.
Okay, so, so it's still with the AGs, so good luck on that. And then the other thing is, is there anything that we need to get a heads up on with audit on the recycling fund?
Not right now. We're still working with them. They are still trying to gather some documents, information in regards to the RF. The last audit they did on us was 2015, I believe. So, you know, I guess we're just all playing catch up here, but we are in compliance and providing them whatever documents they are needing.
Great, yeah. I mean, I have gone recently through some audits. When I was at the Research Corporation, they're very thorough and it takes a long time and there's a lot of documentation. So you know, it's a lot of work for the, for the agency.
Thank you.
Just, and then, you know, they'd love to take whatever little thing it is and, and put that in their headline. So just if there is anything, let the board know.
Of course, definitely. I mean, again, you, you've gone through audits, so you know right now, I mean, there's not much to say as we don't know anything. We are going through the audit process. If there is something alarming, of course, obviously, we will advise the board. As of right now, we are still in the meeting stage, gathering document stage and reviewing stage. So, yes.
Good job. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time? We could come back to it later also. Okay, since since come up to March, have we had any notices of violations?
So you guys have, you should have in your package, all the notices of violations. Ron, do you have a current list? I, in reading the list, right, it looks like the 21st of May, there was a, an NOV issued. Regarding water pollution, prevailing private wastewater disposal system on and illegal construction of house extensions without upgrading the wastewater disposal system. And that house is located in Chalampago. Okay, I also see that on the 29th of April 2025, Guam Memorial Hospital skilled nursing unit was issued an NOV regarding hazardous waste. The complaint for the violation is an underground storage tank or UST violation. Said SNU failed to maintain results and or records of monitoring and testing of functionality. For, or test for the release of, for release detection for three years. They failed to maintain records for the tank and piping release detention, periodic testing of school prevention and contaminant equipment. Monthly and annual walkthrough inspections for the UST system and records verifying training of designated class A VLC operators. And if you can see, there's some comments listed there. That we, on the 13th of May, the hazardous waste management program received a notice of intent to appeal. On the 13th of May, also, the copy of the notice of appeal was provided to Minister Lasta Mosse and AG Finney. On the 19th, the request for hearing officer was sent via email to Office of the Attorney General Solicitors Division. And on the 20th, 20th of May, hard copies of that same request were delivered. Those look to be the two newest that I can see in this spreadsheet that you also have electronically.
Okay, thank you. And just for everyone's information. It's required in these board meetings for the NOVs to be reported, all new NOVs to be reported. So for, just for clarification, for, is, is someone from air and land or water present for the NOV that you said requested a hearing officer? Is that accurate?
So no one's currently present from air and land because our deputy administrator is out sick. And I don't think anybody was able to step in behind him with such short notice.
Okay, well, just for the record, my understanding is that it was appealed, but a hearing is not requested. But we'll circle back with Michelle and Arlene on the status of that NOV that's been appealed.
Okay. And again, my apologies, all the normal folks are out, including Arlene.
No worries.
And our, our leadership, so.
Okay, is anyone in the room? So air and land's not there. How about the, the water division in regards to enforcement and inspections?
Yep, we have our inspector supervisor, Mr. Ron Toffers here with me.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to give an update on activities over the last month since March?
I'm Ron Toffers from the Inspector Program, I'm the supervisor, regards to the the NOV that we're talking about earlier. With this Chalampago. So what it is, is we gave her an NOV and we're waiting 45 days for her. We gave her 45 days to respond to our, our our corrective actions for this NOV. Which she, this, this complaint has been since 2000, you know, I don't have the form, the documents with me. But if I can try and remember, I believe it's like 2001.
No worries. And yeah, for the NOV, well, if it gets appealed to the board and they request a hearing, well, we could hear more about it at that time. But how about in regards to your inspections going on to the field? And, and other things aside from writing up NOVs, how's, how has the work been going since March?
Oh, the other, the other NOV you're talking about?
No, the other enforcement activities and inspections.
Your inspection, your daily inspection since March, how's the inspection coming along?
Inspections have been going really well. As far as like the silk fence from the last time, that stairway situation. Remember that stairway situation where they didn't have the silk fence up and they were complaining about? We took care of all that and what we, what we did was we went ahead and it's having to do with the silk fence. Before they get their application for their building permit, we had to inspect their silk fence. Because when they received their application, they never put up their sequence and there was a lot of complaints in regards to the runoff. But ever since we changed the way they received their application. We haven't had any issues. We had like a couple of, maybe like one or two. But after I explained the reasons for it, then they, they understood, but what, where we're going first.
I'll also chime in and say that with regard to the concern about the, the water quality around that staircase, we sent our monitoring team out and, you know, we pulled in some of the concerns about the quality of the sand that was there. And we said, oh, naturally, the sand feels a little squishier than people would expect. Because there are three freshwater seats there. So the, the texture and quality of the sand was what we had expected. We also would expect the clumping that we saw certainly like with the KUAM story. We expected that because when you have a freshwater seep, it pushes the larger particles away. So you get more fine particles. You also get different types of algae growth there. So everything was as expected. We saw no disturbance to the water quality there. So felt pretty comfortable that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And it was also, we went back out. It was fish swimming around the area. You can actually see the school of fish around that area. So we were like, okay, everything should be okay now.
We're also going to bring in Ms. Mendoza with some update on the inspections that her team, the sanitary inspections her team has been conducting.
Hello, good afternoon. So this is an update for March and April, the state drinking water program. Conducted its fourth round at the Anderson Air Force Base Water System. And we identified approximately 100 deficiencies. And we finalized the report and significant deficiencies are, are required for them. We identified significant deficiencies which require the system to respond with corrective measures or or an extension. So they have 30 days and then the minor deficiencies, they have one year. And recommendations, they don't need to respond. So a total of 100, a total of approximately 100 deficiencies were cited. How many were significant? About 36 significant deficiencies. So they have to respond within 30 days. So we're working with the system right now to to come up with those corrective measures. And if they can't get those corrective measures within 30 days, then they can request real extension. That's all we have for the drinking water program for inspections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding inspections?
No, not for inspections. Okay, is there anyone in the room that could talk about the OD permit?
I wish I could talk about the OD permit. Michelle and I spoke briefly and I, very briefly while I was in Saipan. I know they're still working with USCPA to move that forward. And there's been some conversation with Anderson, but I've not been privy to any of that.
Okay, we'll table that for next meeting. And as we prepare for the next meeting, just at the next meeting, provide what the current action item is of the agency. And if the agency is waiting on another party, what are their timelines and milestones for providing the agency? Its next deliverable or status update? Okay, Julie, we will table the EPA results presentation for the next meeting. Is that okay with you? Okay, thank you so much. And Director Castro requested for the item 6 FRF programs to be on the agenda. So if no other directors have comments or questions on that topic, we could hold that off till the next meeting. And item 6G, I believe Director Hollister, you requested for the agency to summarize and provide their permit fee or their fee schedule. So that's in the board packet. Do you want to talk about it now or?
Really, I'd rather wait till again, we got everybody in the conference room.
Thank you, Director Hollister. Next one, is there anyone in the room to provide an update on the Air Pollution Control State Implementation Plan?
That's me. We've, like I said earlier, we've finished it as well as we can. So we conducted a pretty extensive research and review for building the 2020 sulfur dioxide emissions inventory. We had a report from TRC that was contracted by GPA to conduct that initial inventory. And we found a few gaps, more than a few gaps, maybe. So we cleaned that up. We worked hand in hand to do the emission calculations for some of the marine sources with USCPA. And again, on June 6th, at 6:00 PM, I left my office after submitting that electronically to USCPA for their review and approval. So we have done as much as we can do with that and we are just awaiting their hopefully official approval. Once that is approved, assuming that the rulemaking we submitted in March and the emissions inventory are approved by USCPA. They did a clean data determination or a CDD. And with that CDD, we would not need to submit any other portions of the state implementation plan to them. To demonstrate that we have achieved compliance with the 2010 NACS. So you're on mute, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the board or members of the public at this time?
Steve, is this where we'll ask for things to talk about next time?
Yeah, for sure. Let me write this down.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we asked last time. I could be mistaken. I may have just been thinking about it. But can we get like a inventory of vehicles, running vehicles and vehicles that Guam EPA has at their disposal? In particular for the inspectors. I'd just like to know that to address that and see if we can get them more vehicles. If they're, don't have enough, because that was the indication in our last meeting that their, their first job in the morning was to look for a car so they could go out and inspect something. And then I, I would also ask, I was asked by a mayor to they had asked for EPA to intervene with residents that had, that he called the junkyard a dump and was told and told by, and this is coming from the mayor. That Guam, that wasn't a Guam EPA issue. I went by the house that he was talking about and it looks like a dump, I mean, you know, people are dumping things there and, and junking things there. Is there some clear guidance for the mayors that we could come up with? So they know what is their responsibility and where to, when they can get help from Guam EPA.
Sir, did that mayor tell you who at Guam EPA?
No, you know, I, I, I asked and they couldn't remember. But yeah, his, the words were, I, I was told that doesn't sound like a Guam EPA problem. So I would just, you know, just to clarify for the mayors to help them out and I told them I'd, I'd bring this up for them. And then, one other thing, is there a way we could know what goes into septic tanks? I mean, I, I know the fundamentals, but on Guam, I think we have to have a plastic septic tank shipped in from off island and I, I, you know, I just want to learn, I want to educate myself and educate us and what goes into that because we have, if we're going to have a lot of septic tanks going up, up above the aquifer. I want to make sure that they're the best we can get and see what we can do about that.
Well, sir, I appreciate you because I was going to bring, or I was going to ask to add for our next meeting, draft rules and regulations regarding the type four treatment systems, so I think that those two would go hand in hand and very nicely together. So I appreciate that I didn't even have to pay you off for that, it's great.
I would second that request, I, I think it's really important. You know, on the first request that you, or the first topic you were talking about, it seems to me that there, I don't, maybe Guam EPA already has this. I feel like there's, there's an issue with providing the information to people in an accessible way so that the mayor's office has it, your average person has it, it's understandable as to what you can have on your property. Because I drive around and there are all kinds of sort of illegal car shops. There are all kinds of things going on in addition to just people dumping all kinds of inappropriate stuff. And, you know, for some, some of the folks, I think they probably really don't know what's going on. But for other people, they probably do, but in any event, I feel like we need to kind of, in the information piece, we just need to level the playing field so that everybody has the same information. We're not reinventing the wheel every single time, every mayor has it so that their folks can go out and they know exactly what they have and, you know, and it should come from EPA, I think, to
Here, you've got, you've got a property in your village and there's rusty cars all over there out in the street, what do I do? When do I call EPA if they don't know?
Right, and have it on the website too, you know, so that people can see, because this is a really common problem. And, you know, it's really, it's terrible for the environment, it's terrible for health. In addition to, you know, creating urban blight and destroying jungles and all those other kinds of things. But, I mean, if there's some way to, to do something like that, to educate folks so that it's really very clear, very simple, you know?
Yes ma'am, so noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions and comments? Okay, hearing, and thank you so much, Captain DeGrange. We'll plan for our next meeting to be the third Thursday of July. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor? Hi. Thank you very much, everybody, have a good weekend.
Thank you so much. Time?
Welcome Heather.
Did they say time? No, time, time is 4:59. Time is 4:59 and the next board meeting is the third Thursday, which I'm going to assume is July 17th.
It is ma'am, yes.
Okay, Director Kathleen, you're still there, so nice, thank you for staying on board until we actually close out the board meeting.
I'm leaving now. Thank you.
Are we good?